All five directors, Director Campbell, Director Whitfield, Director Barnes, Director Johnson, we have Acting Superintendent Carl Bruner, executive staff and members of our staff, as well as members of the community. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Members of the public can log into the special board or into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to agenda item 1.04, review of the agenda. Just before we go ahead and approve the agenda, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that or the public was aware and the directors were aware that the sequence of agenda items changed a little bit, but there were no other revisions made. So agenda item 1.06, approval of the agenda is our emotion.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the agenda dated August 8, 2022 as presented. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed 5 to 0. Moving on to agenda item 2.01, Public Review and Hearing of the 2223 Budget. Welcome to the Monroe Public Schools Board of Directors' Public Hearing of the 2223 Budget Extension. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for you, the citizens of the Monroe School District, to share your ideas about the budget document with your Board of Directors. Remember that the Board of Directors is composed of citizens like you. Each member of the Board was elected by you to provide the best education for our boys and girls. The Board plans to consider the adoption of the final 2022-23 Budget Extension Document on August 22, 2022. Chief Financial Officer Brenda Hunt will present the budget extension to you this evening. Following a time period for board questions, there will be time set aside for audience comments. A copy of the budget document will be made available to anyone requesting it. To help guide the proceedings of this budget hearing, there are a few simple ground rules which will ensure things go smoothly and everyone has the opportunity to speak and be heard. All speakers must complete one of the Audience Participation Request Forms which are available on the back table. Please sign your name, address, and phone number and bring it forward to the Board. Two, speakers will be called upon prior to giving their testimony. Three, each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Four, each speaker should address the issues of the school budget. If speakers get too far afield, the Board President, me, will remind them to address the issues at hand. Five, please try not to be overly repetitive in your comments, particularly if a prior speaker has already dealt with a subject at great length. Six, it is requested that speakers make no derogatory nor inflammatory comments directed toward any individual. And seven, it is important that the Board or it is important to the Board that all persons be heard equally and that they are not intimidated by persons of differing views. All comments are important this evening and should be heard with respect to the speaker and his or her ideas. Again, thanks to all of you for coming this evening. The Board is anxious to hear you. And we'll go ahead and pass it over to Ms. Brenda Hunt.
This evening, I am going to be presenting the 2223 Budget. And as President Bumpus indicated, this is our budget hearing and we are scheduled for budget adoption at our next board meeting, August 22. I'd like to start by explaining our budget development process this year. As you know, we had no levy pass in February of 2022. And so as of that decision in February by our voters, the Board subsequently on Valentine's Day made a decision to delay our second attempt at our 23 levy until after the April election date. And that was primarily to give the district more time to resolve or partially resolve community concerns and to heal and to provide district leadership an opportunity to listen and learn from what our community was telling us by not voting for our levy. Shortly after that, we assembled a very fast-paced budget committee. And essentially, that committee was assembled to provide input on recommended reductions that district leadership had provided. And the goal was determined that the committee would target a $7 million reduction that was essentially to defray the revenue that was lost due to loss of student FTE through this year. And then subsequently, the Board approved the use of $7 million in fund balance, which effectively covered the potential loss of levy dollars next year. The list of reductions is abbreviated on this page, but these are a few things that we had targeted and things that were prioritized by our budget committee. And I wanted to, which include right sizing certificated staffing, right sizing paraprofessional staffing, custodial staffing, reducing this program, eliminating this Everett Community College and Shoreline Community College program, and shifting funding sources of TOSs. And then 3% reduction, we took away professional learning. We deferred leases for vehicles. We reduced our professional development. We reduced funding for experiential learning. We deferred the K-8 science curriculum and we deferred desktop alert system. Now, this worked on paper. However, as we started to staff and we started to look at evolving enrollment numbers for next year, not all of this was realized. And so we had to make adjustments to the budget as we proceeded. So we have three areas of unconventional revenue that we're using for next year. When I did the budget extension several months ago, I forecasted that we would have $14 million in fund balance at the end of the 2122 fiscal year. In that 14 million, I had included $4 million of enrollment stabilization that the district was to receive in June. Since that budget hearing, new guidance has come out by OSPI. And what that means is that I have to pull the enrollment stabilization dollars that the district has right now and is sitting in fund balance and record it as deferred revenue or unearned revenue. And so that takes it out of fund balance, but switches it to a revenue. So we still have access to it. We're still spending it, but as you see in our budget documents, we didn't use 7 million fund balance because we have enrollment stabilization as a revenue now. So we're still using the 7 million. It just looks different. We're also using 3.7 million of, or 3.4 million of fund balance, 3.7 million of enrollment stabilization. Because we did not realize the 7 million in or the 2.7 million in certificated staffing reductions and some of the other things on that list. And because our COLA, our IPD came in significantly higher than what we had anticipated, we were required to use the 3.5 million of SIR3 dollars as well. So those are three sources of revenue that we use that we didn't talk about last time we met at my budget extension meeting. That's a total of $10,608,000 that are being used from those resources. Now, if the levy were to pass in November, the levy dollars that we would be expecting in the spring of '23, the spring of next year, would be approximately $8.4 million. So that would offset that 10 million. And that would make the budgeting process for next year less devastating. If the levy does not pass, we're going to be looking at 10 million plus cost of living. And so that's the message as we move forward with our levy, that it can range between 2 million to 10 million plus cost of living. Does that make sense? Next is our enrollment. The first column, Budget 22122, is what we actually budgeted for these programs for the fiscal year that we are in currently. The next column is what we actually have. And so as you can see, in traditional buildings, elementary and middle school, we are a little bit ahead of where we had anticipated being. The high school, we're below. The ALEs, we're right on, one FTE more. Running start, we're significantly lower. And the Sky Valley, the Shoreline Community College and Everett Community College were significantly lower. And so it's 35 FTE between what we budgeted and what we actually have that is the status of enrollment for this fiscal year. Next year, budget for 2223, we are anticipating having 5,563 FTE, not including, that does include running start, so 5,563. Once again, as you can see, that's 216 FTE less than what we currently have, but 292 of that 216 is the reduction of Everett Community College and Shoreline. So our traditional buildings and Sky Valley are actually ahead of where we are now. And so this is the enrollment that the budget is based on. Next page is our certificated staffing. The top part of this sheet is the various combinations of our teacher staff and the funding programs or sources that they are funded through. And as you can see, the certificated staffing has been budgeted for 7.9 FTE more than what we budgeted last year. That does not mean we're adding 7.9 teachers in the 2223. That means that we added some in 2122 because our enrollment was higher and we've added some in 2223. Does that make sense? Our budget, our budget is based on prior year budget. So this encompasses all changes since we sat here a year ago. And the second part or the bottom part of this page is our district admin. And as you can see, there is no change to our district admin staffing for next year. And so the total of certificated staffing is 7.9. I wanted to add the comment on the very bottom that if you're one of the people that tie our certificated staffing to the F-195 document, this number is nine FTE higher than what's on the F-195 because we have nine classified administrators that are included in this number. Next area is classified staffing. Classified staffing stayed relatively consistent. It's reduced by 0.19 FTE. What we did during our budget process is re redefine how folks were, what buckets of money people were being paid out of. Didn't, across the board, eliminate Paris and OPs, our classified staffing. Again, this page, the total certificated classified staff is nine less than what is reflected on the F-195 because those are administrators that got moved to the prior page. Questions? Next is our general fund comparisons. This is a five-year comparison. The first three years are actual expenditures. The 2122 reflects the revenues that we were projecting when we did our budget revision. And then the 2223 is what we're projecting our revenue to be for the 2223 year. As you can see from this, there's a decline of our local taxes. That's because when we built the budget, we did not assume that we would have tax dollars in the spring of next year. So that's why you see that sharp decline in taxes. You, if you go down to federal special purpose, you see that the first three actuals are $3 to $4 million. This current year, 2122, because we have so many federal resources that bump that number up. Again, those are one-time dollars. When they're gone, they're gone. And for 2223, we've declined in our federal resources. However, it is still higher than what we historically saw prior to COVID. Our revenue reductions for next year is a 5.4% decrease over our current year and that equates to roughly $5.4 million less. This is a different way of looking at the same information. Our state dollars make up 78% of our district programs. Federal dollars are 12%. That's an increase. It's usually sitting around 6% to 7%. Our levy dollars are 8% of our 2223 budget. That's usually sitting between 15 and 16%. And our fund balance is funding 3.54% of our total budget. Next slide is our expenditures. Again, we made those 3% reductions across all programs. We took out professional development. We made a lot of changes which got us down to the expenditures that we have, the 98 million that we have here. The second line is the ESIR and enrollment stabilization. That's that $7.5 million that are one-time dollars. And the rest of it, as I said, is made up out of fund balance. All the programs are reduced significantly over the prior year. Student assistance are the categorical programs that are based on our free and reduced program. Fortunately, a lot of those stayed consistent or went up a little bit. We do have capacity. When I build the budget, I build the budget for $1 million of revenue that we don't know where it's going to come from, but we build it in and a matching $1 million of expenditures. That means that if we were to get up to $1 million of additional federal resources or program applies for a grant, it has enough capacity in there and the Board approved appropriation that we can spend without coming to the Board for a budget revision. So again, matching revenue and expenditures of 1 million. That 1 million is located down in other instructional services. That's why that number is significantly higher than what we traditionally spent there. Again, another look at the same information. Because we have one-time federal resources, the percentage to total goes down with the other programs. Basic Ed and CTE for the 2223 budget is 54.93% of the total budget. And federal special purpose and categorical programs total 11.95%. Same information, however, it's shown as objects. It shows our certificated salaries, classified benefits, supplies, materials, services, travel, and capital outlay. And when you see the increase in the salaries, that's primarily that larger-than-normal IPD. Benefits have gone up. Supplies and materials, of course, have gone down. Services have gone down because that is where we typically paid Everett Community College and Shoreline Community College. So those dollars are no longer in the services area or Object 7. This is a percent. Salaries and benefits in the 2223 budget make up 84% of our budget. That's an increase from approximately 79 to 80%. So salaries and benefits are taking a bigger portion of our overall budget for next year. And the balances, the expenditures, the material supplies and operating costs are MSOCs. The general fund summary. Once again, a five-year history. 18, 19, 19, 20, and 2021 are our actual expenditures. 2122 is our budget revision that we just, our budget extension that we just did a few months ago. And again, our budget extension was projecting a fund balance of approximately $14,124,000. And our beginning for next year without the enrollment stabilization in there is approximately $10,436. And the fund balance, however, we're projecting around $7 million at the end of the year. And the impact on fund balance is no impact by enrollment stabilization. It's still about a $7 reduction. Passage of the levy. Impact these numbers also. This is the breakdown of what we project our fund balance, how we project our fund balance to be divided at year-end. The last column is the percent of revenue. Our current fund balance policy states that we'll maintain a 5% of revenues plus $1,115,000. And so that's why that says 6.2% and not 5% because we included that that extra amount in there. And then restricted for carryover, restricted revenue. That's the money we get for lab or CTE that we didn't spend. So we have to set it aside to be spent the following year in the same capacity that it was given to us in. Non-spendable is typically for this district, it is our year-end inventory of commodities that food service gets. They get, they do inventory of all the commodities that they get used. And so we have to set that aside. Assigned for other purposes, that is things, it's at superintendent's discretion. And that's typically like building budget carryovers or things that, initiatives that we may be planning for the following year. Maybe some extracurriculum, but that is at the superintendent's discretion. The unassigned minimum fund balance, of course, is at the Board's discretion. And then the unassigned is that which isn't in any other category. So this is the division of that $7,077,600 that we're projecting to have at year-end. Any questions? So moving forward, enrollment stabilization will be removed from fund balance at the end of 2122 and moved to unearned revenue and it will become revenue on September 1st. ESIR3 is planned to be fully expended in the 2223 fiscal year. This revenue will no longer be available in the future. If we do not pass a levy, this is an automatic reduction for next year. And if the levy doesn't pass, that will compound that, that reduction that we'll have to do. And we talked about this when we did the budget revision and we talked about the risks that we were collectively taking. And just want to keep it on our radar that we're still hopeful, but we have potentially decisions to make in the future. This is our MSOC disclosure. This is something that was a new requirement several years ago. And essentially, the OSPI sends us our apportionment under two umbrellas, staffing and material supplies and operating costs. And each year, we have to share with the Board what we're receiving or what we anticipate receiving for the budget, the fiscal year, and we anticipate receiving $6,366,194 to be used on MSOCs. And we are required to spend that much on MSOCs or explain how we're improving student achievement by not spending it on things. And so this is a breakdown of what we spend in Basic Ed, our ALE programs and District-wide Support Program 97. And we're spending $8,134. So that's a difference of $1.7 million that we're spending more than what we're receiving. And so we don't have to provide any support. A couple of years, last year, if you look at this, it was closer to a little over $6 million because of the other programs. Capital Projects Fund. So I want to pause and ask if you have questions about general fund.
Want to wait until we got to it? So you touched on it in the last section. So before we move on, I wanted to ask if you can go back a few slides to the impact for the 2223 year. You mentioned that by dipping into our, our general fund balance in order to make up the $7 million, that leaves us a much lower fund balance than what we had. And we talked about that back and past it in February. One of the questions I had was, what does this look like as far as a financial forecast for subsequent school year like 2223? If the levy does not fail, what types of financial impacts would that have on our district? How would we be able to make up that?
If the levy does not fail?
If it, sorry, if the levy does not pass, if it fails in November, and are we, how would that impact our 2223 school year? Because of the extra ESIR dollars, the federal dollars that are one-time, that's making up certain areas. Our fund balance is making up the difference of that. We're able to make that up for this school year.
For 2223.
But for the fiscal year of 2223, sorry. So then for 2324, the following fiscal school year, what would that do to our district?
We would have to become very resourceful. Essentially, we have the November election. If the November election does not pass, our proposition does not pass in November, then we would have to plan on reducing 10 million. November is our second attempt at 2023 calendar year collections. And so if our levy does not pass in November, if the Board very quickly If the board very quickly turned around to run an additional. Attempt in February of twenty-three. We would then be looking for. Levy dollars in calendar year twenty-four. So if the talent, if the, if the levy does not pass in twenty-three. We've had two strikes, there will be no levy dollars in calendar year twenty-three. If the board wants to turn around and go out a third time, February of twenty. Three, then that would be our first attempt at calendar year twenty-four. And so with, if both of those, if we were to do one and were unsuccessful. Then when how to do another one? Then when we budgeted for twenty-three, twenty-four, we would have absolutely levy dollars.
Taking. A board member hat off and putting my taxpayer and my dad hat on as a parent in the district. What does this look like for impact on my children and the children in our community, our students? Does this look like teacher reduction? So we have much larger class sizes. Does this look like program reduction? Does this look like sports reduction? How do we make up that ten million dollars then, if we do have a double failure?
We're in initial clarification stages of that now. However, it would include our transportation. It would include our athletics and activities. It would include the way that we structure classrooms. It would include all staffing district-wide, not just the classrooms. It would include nurses. We have a cell requirement or a social emotional, which is our nurses, our counselors. Our therapists. And we are staffed much richer than what our compliance requirement is. We're staffed much richer in technology. Custodial, it's all part of our district priorities. And what the district feels we need to. Serve our students well. And so our process, our thought process, our priorities. Our effectiveness of what we're doing would all have to be evaluated and prioritized. And it. It's just scary to think about. It's wouldn't not be an easy decision.
So what I'm hearing you say correctly, if I'm wrong, is for our students. If we have this double failure, this is going to impact greatly class sizes. So the student to teacher ratio is going to go drastically up. Their ability to access technology in the twenty-first century is going to go down drastically. Our extracurricular activities are going to disappear quite a bit. Which we know that students who are student athletes and in extracurricular activities tend to do better academically. So that then in turn impacts academics. It impacts our counselors to be able to attend to social emotional needs with our students. And it impacts our nurses to care for the health of our students. Does it impact our classified staff as well to support? Just want to make sure I heard that correctly.
The adjectives were yours. Any other questions for general fund?
I have one quick one, just because it's, it's standing out to me and I think you addressed it, but I'm, I'm just going to ask you to say, to explain it to me again. So in our previous budget and budget committee conversations. That, that the levy was fourteen to fifteen percent of our budget is really sticking out to me and it's just locked in my brain. And so on slide twelve, where levy dollars fund eight percent. Of district programs, can you, can you just help me understand the difference between those percentages?
Because that's just for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Because we are not budgeting for a spring collection, just a fall collection for next year. The percentage drops down to eight percent. It would be higher if we were budgeting to have a spring collection as well, but we're not. So the fifteen to sixteen percent is based on a full year of levy collection. Does that make sense? Any other general fund questions? Yes, Chuck.
I was looking at the form F two oh three. Quite extensively and trying to understand that from the E S D. Uh, first off, what, what is that? It seems like it's a breakdown per. Per category of teachers. And then I guess just to. See how that relates to that MSOX. And what does MSOX stand for?
Material supplies and operating costs.
Oh, okay.
And to answer your question, the F two oh three is what we use to calculate or to project our revenue. And so that it's a tool. And the district puts in their anticipated revenue, uh, their anticipated student F T E. And including our, all of our traditional buildings, our running start. Our ALE programs. Plus we put in information regarding the enrollment of our multilingual learners. And our enrollment of our special education students. And then it runs it through the formulas and tells us how much we can expect to receive. For certified staffing and classified staffing and MSOX. Based on that prototypical model that we talked about. It's been almost a year. Um, that prototypical funding model that we talked about in the past. So it applies all of those formulas and it comes up with, this is what you budget for these areas. And it gives us the breakdown. So yay for reading it. Good job.
I also read. That F one ninety-five and were you going to talk about, uh? Enrollment projections a little bit further. Can I, or can I ask you a question about that?
Um, I wasn't, but are you talking about the F one ninety-five F? Yeah, can we talk?
I must have.
Talk about that at the end.
Okay.
Okay.
Brenda, one more question, just because it's something you mentioned. To understand also with the state prototypical model. This is a model that the state says this is the ideal size. But those numbers are not necessarily realistic to what we're able to actually do with our students. So. The number of students per classroom, the number of students per, and the number of counselors per school per student, that type of a thing. And that's where you're saying that we're also a little bit rich in our staffing because we have more nurses per student in our district. So that we can try and get at least a nurse in every building. We're trying to get a counselor in every building or multiple if it's the bigger buildings. And that is larger than what the state numbers say that we need, correct?
Exactly. Um, not only do we staff at a higher F T E. But each F T E costs us more than what the state provides.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got one question, Brenda. On the executive summary, page thirty-eight out of the fifty-nine. There's a line item for expenditures by activity that says board of directors. And it says that our expenditure this last year was two hundred and twenty-eight thousand fifty dollars, but. Projected for the twenty-two, twenty-three year is four hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. And I'm wondering why. For a board of directors, it has gone up a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Legal fees.
Okay. Thank you.
That's very conservative increase. But it's primarily legal fees. I'm sorry. Great question. Any other questions? All right, we're going to move on to capital projects. As you know, in two thousand and fifteen, we passed. Actually, it was before fifteen, I'm thinking of the bonds. We had a levy, our levy expired two years ago for capital projects. We are just now completing. Between this summer and next summer, we're completing the punch list. For the things that we promised our voters that we would pay. And so the resources in capital projects are being reduced. Without the passage of another bond or a tech levy. These resources are one time we spend them and they're not auto-generating. They don't come back without the passage of another levy. So I budgeted four hundred and seven thousand dollars in revenue for capital projects. That is based on mitigation fees. The, the mitigation impact fees that we receive from both the county. And the city each time that a contractor is. Building, getting a permit to build. They pay a fee to the county and or the city and that comes back to the district. And so that's the revenue we have. And we have investment earnings on the balance that's in capital projects. So those collectively are anticipated to be about four hundred and seven thousand. The expenditures are anticipated to be roughly one million five hundred and twenty. And those are broken down by, we have an ADA access at Sky Valley. We have the fire alarm system at Sky Valley. We have miscellaneous minor capital projects for four hundred thousand. That doesn't really, that's not defined. That's just what we have left. So that can be used on miscellaneous capital projects. We have twenty thousand left from our last tech levy. And I put in classroom capacity of five hundred thousand. In case there is something in our approved capital facilities plan. That we may use mitigation funds for.
Sorry. In the revenue for the mitigation, you said that we have between our investment earnings and our mitigation four hundred and seven thousand, but we, you're budgeting five hundred. That's going to come from that?
Well, we have some in fund balance.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Can I ask a quick question on this one? Just because it, for, in my mind, it ties back to a previous. Or discussion about capital projects. So is the miscellaneous capital projects, is that where? Something like a change order for paving at a bus barn would show up?
Those.
I'm just trying to understand.
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Those will all be done this year, but potentially, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We're going to move on. We're almost done. Debt service fund. Debt service fund, we had the voters approved one hundred and ten million dollars in two thousand and fifteen. We sold fifty-five million immediately in two thousand and fifteen. We sold an additional fifteen million and fifty-five million in bonds in two thousand and seventeen. And essentially the debt service fund is where we house that debt. The money from the bonds goes to capital projects where we spend it. And then that service is where we pay our interest. And our principal from each year. The revenues for the debt service fund come from our local taxes. And the board essentially certifies those when they adopt the budget. And then we have to recertify at the end of November in case anything changed between August and November. And so we're anticipating. Budgeting seven million three hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and nineteen for collection. In calendar year twenty-three. And our principal and interest payment. For our debt service in twenty-two, twenty-three is that seven million one hundred fifty-four. The reason why we increase it a little bit is that long-term. Our payments start to go up. And our requirement is to reach. One twelfth of our prior year debt service at one point in the year. So you have criteria as to how much you can collect because you have to dip to that point. At least once in the year, and that's usually after our principal was paid in December that we touch it and then we move away from it. But so we can't store voters' dollars in our debt service and collect interest. Um, our projected rate based on our collections for calendar year twenty-three. Is about eighty-three cents per thousand. Or eighty-three dollars per thousand, per a hundred thousand. A year for a home. Transportation vehicle fund. The resources, this comes from the state depreciation schedule. The more buses that we have on the depreciation schedule, the more revenue that the district receives. The district is making every effort to replace buses that have fallen. Off the depreciation schedule on a regular basis. Sometimes, however, like this year. Some of the buses don't arrive by the end of August. And so there'll probably be more buses next year than we paid for this year because they're on the way to meet and arrive. But our revenues are from the depreciation schedule. Again, the investment earnings on that money that's in the fund. And our expenditures are to give us capacity, not only for buses that didn't arrive this year. But for buses that we may order and receive next year. And so we're anticipating four hundred and seventy thousand dollar revenue. Nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in expenditures, leaving a fund balance of a hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred twenty-eight. Again, we'll get the depreciation every, we get it every August. Any questions on transportation? A S B at the, um, each of the schools, the buildings are responsible for creating their own A S B budget. We have, uh, my department manager in the fiscal department. Is our resident expert on A S B. So she's been working with the students to not only project their ending fund balance. Closer to what it actually is, but to work with the revenues and expenditures. And try to use some of the half a million dollars that's been out in fund balance collectively for quite a while. So these are the budgets that, uh, that the students put together for each building. And this is their individual budgets by building. So Sky Valley budgeted to have four thousand left at the end of the year. They budgeted to get a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars in revenue. And spend a hundred and nine thou- hundred ninety-one thousand and have six thousand two hundred and forty-two at the end of the year. Um, again, they have to do their best guess on what their fundraisers will collect. And based on that, what their expenditures will be. These are students, learning, and so sometimes it deviates a little bit. If they under-project their expenditures, then they have to borrow capacity from other buildings. So they try to. Pat it just a little bit so that if they have a really successful fundraiser, they're still able to spend. And so we're trying to get that mentality going with the students in our buildings. So it's fun.
Brenda, got a question?
Yes, sir.
So the students budget. So like for the high school. One point one million dollars, we give them that money and they say, and say, spend it. Or do they project it for items that are needed?
They put together the A S B student body. And they put together their own, what they, what kind of fundraisers they're going to have. What they project their revenues will be from each fundraiser. And then they put together how they believe they will spend it. And so they are responsible for their own fundraising. And they are responsible for their own expenditures. This money does not come from district resources. Does that make sense?
Yes. The numbers on the F one ninety-five, I believe it was the F one ninety-five F. Was talking about, uh, the expenditures. For athletics, I think it was eight hundred thousand. So what is? What did they spend that on? Uniforms, uh, fees, travel.
The general fund athletics. The general fund pays primarily for staff. Coaches, assistant coaches and transportation. There is a small amount that's put into the athletics and activities budget. For, it's, we label it district support. For example, we have sixteen thousand dollars. For example, we have sixteen thousand dollars in our general fund athletics budget. To pay for uniforms and or supplies at the middle school level. And so it's up to the folks at the middle schools to determine how they want to spend that each year. And so there's other district support, but most of it in the general fund. Is is um staff and transportation.
Okay, I understand that. With the fundraisers, so any, uh, I understand the need to have strict accounting with monies coming in. Hearing of and knowing of embezzlement and. People not being responsible, spending their money. Uh, also, private and business. How much money do they typically earn and what do they spend it on, I'm still curious if it's not. Staffing or assistant coaches and the. Uniforms and the basic, you know, they're not playing, not paying for facilities or rental. It's more of a curiosity thing for me than a budget item, I'm just.
So if a football team at the high school had a fundraiser to raise. Funds for the football team. Um, that would, depending on student choice. But that would typically offset the cost for uniforms. It um could offset the cost for a. Football activity that they do, anything that is cultural art. Recreational or sports is what is allowed in in the ASB. Um, the gate fees. For, or the athletic participation fees that they collect from each student. It goes into the ASB, for example, if a student pays a hundred dollars to play football. That goes into ASB, but it's paid back to the district to offset the cost of the. Of the athletic program. So it goes into ASB and then I invoice them every month and they write us a check and they. Pay us back those participation fees. But most of it stays in the general fund, sometimes each club, football, soccer. Um, cheerleading will pay back to the general ASB in their building. So that they can have an awesome homecoming dance. Or they could have a huge graduation ceremony. Those types of things, but it's voted on by the student representatives. And um we don't. Involve ourselves in that, it's, um, they have each, they all have advisors. Um, they all follow strict accounting rules. Every deposit that they make, we get the deposit slips and we help them reconcile. But it's a, it's, it's controlled by the students, there's more principal involvement at the elementary schools. But it's a life learning opportunity for the students.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have, any other questions?
I have a question. I'm interested in uh student projections and. What I find interesting is demographics and growth, I look at that for business. Uh, in fact, if we want to have a presentation sometime by. A demographer, I find that interesting, we had once over years ago. On the projections we have on that F one ninety-five. We had pretty much flat enrollment uh throughout the years through. Let me see. I think twenty-five, yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six, but the. The capital improvement. Presentation we're gonna have has it at. Four point seven, and that it's based on the population growth in Monroe of thirteen point seven. And Snohomish County overall for their student population, it's nine point four, so are we? And and I know the demographics are estimated and they apply some formulas to that, but you. You're probably gonna say yes, but you've probably taken that all into account and. Looked at your projections.
Well, the projections, the one ninety-five F is what um Director Whitfield is talking about. And in that one F, in the F one ninety, one ninety-five F, we project out four years. Um, plus twenty-two, twenty-three, and when I do that, I project. Just using straight cook, straight, straight cohort ratios, there's no formula applied. Meaning if they're first graders this year, they'll be second graders next year, and that is to. Um, unless we're anticipate a huge enrollment decrease. That's the most conservative way to do it, I also built into the F one ninety-five. Um, anticipated levy. For the out years, because I'm allowed to do that in the F one ninety-five. So essentially that if all things being relatively equal. That reflects what our financial status would be over the next four years. If I got really creative with the enrollment and I got really creative with the revenue. The tool itself becomes less, less useful. And when I initially did it, I left the levy out, we, I didn't like the results of that. And so I spoke with the E S D, they said we're allowed to put our levy into the F one ninety-five F, so I chose that option. And so that tells you what we would be looking at ultimately for the next four years, all things being equal. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Um, in a year, the future will will change. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple, um, and these are more like general questions. Um, and and general comments, so I, I have a really hard time getting through these budget documents, they're long. Um, it is, it is hard for me to know what I'm looking at. I end up, you know, trying to see things that stand out to me, but not really knowing if it's relevant. Why they're standing out to me or not, and so a lot of times I feel like I don't. I don't have the knowledge at this point to be able to ask relevant questions and to, you know. Fully embody that governance component that I'm responsible for, so that's something that I'm gonna work on. Um, for anybody who's interested, I, I did a little bit of poking around and Wazda has. Uh, it's a twenty-eight page publication from twenty nineteen called The Basics of School Finance. You can do a quick Google search and find it, I'm gonna try to read through that, just to give myself a general overview. Um, and then Brenda, I do, I hope to meet with you separately, um, and also with superintendents to to continue my education. If there are, you know, for somebody who's looking over the presentation or the budget documents, if they have questions about. You know, where specific funds are coming from, what's getting spent, what regulations there are. Who should they be reaching out to with those questions, so, so reaching out to Ms. Brenda Hunt. Could be useful, okay, okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
We'll also just mention that every year we have a shining audit from the state. And the information that uh Brenda presents is. Is on track and is in compliance with all the state, federal and international laws. That we probably have to comply with, so. Thank you for your work and keeping us uh. Keeping us right with our monies.
Thank you, Chuck.
Brenda, so I was fortunate enough to be able to be part of the committee, the Budget Advisory Committee and learn. Um, because we've had one-on-ones, but that was. An opportunity for me to sit with community members and learn more. I thought I knew and I did not, I didn't know, um, so I'm wondering if we have any information about. Uh, I knew we had a conversation about starting it sooner and involving more of the community. I'm wondering if that's something that we have information about. Um, or if we are rolling that out in the next couple of months.
Well, my goal was to um start a budget advisory committee. However, I was waiting for us to have a long-term superintendent. And so I'm sure that she and I will have conversations and come up with the best solution moving forward.
Awesome, thank you, and I wanted to say thank you for all of your work as well, I know that this is a tremendous. Uh, task, and so I thank you for your detail and. Um, for presenting and taking the time to present this information so thoroughly, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, okay, so I will go ahead and I'm just gonna ask three times. Um, I would like to know if we have any question, any comments from the public? Okay, before we close out, any comments, questions from the public? Perfect, oh, sorry, I thought that was for audience comments, okay, Ms. Melanie Lockhart. Okay, can I have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
Yep, um, my name is Melanie Lockhart, I'm a parent of Monroe students, and I'm also the chairman for the Citizens for Monroe Schools Committee. Which represents a group of people who want to see the levy pass in November. Um, thank you to Brenda Hunt and any staff who took part in ensuring this budget was put together for the upcoming school year. I know it's a lot of work every year, especially when working with particularly constrained budgets. I also know Brenda is willing to field calls and emails to answer questions anytime, I've done it, I know. That said, I worry about how not public friendly this all is. For anyone who isn't super familiar with budgets, which is the vast majority of the community, the whats, wheres, hows and whys aren't very clear. My former experience as a reporter covering school districts and my ongoing passion for information. Means that I've looked at this stuff way, way more than the average constituent, but I'm still confused by a lot of pieces. So my biggest ask moving forward, including between now and adoption of the budget later this month, month, is for more clarity. Um, also, I had hoped we'd have at least one budget workshop this summer. Ahead of this public hearing and that it would have been an ongoing discussion over the course of the summer, hopefully additional discussions can be incorporated next year. I too took part in the Budget Advisory Committee meetings in the spring, and I know the proposed budget cuts the district decided on were given to the board back in April. Um, however, nothing was firmed up at that point, aside um from the fund balance vote and then deciding that RIF notices weren't necessary. Um, thank you for the update to the budget presentation slides regarding those specific cuts, when I looked, I think yesterday or over the weekend. That wasn't included yet, and so I'm adding that took away some of my questions and concerns. The community needs to know with clarity where the cuts are being made, along with emphasis on how much deeper these cuts will go. If the levy doesn't pass, so voters can make informed decisions come election day. Most voters will never hear this meeting or this hearing or any of the expanded explanation, so any of the extra conversation. They won't hear it, it has to be determined how you're gonna get that information out to the community. Um, there was a lot of discussion about utilizing up to the seven million in fund balance to offset half of the levy money, should it not pass. And until the update to the presentation, it wasn't clear why the budget indicated that only three point six five million. Um, would be taken from the beginning fund balance and then also why the fund balance ended at four million more than it starts with. So I appreciate the explanation, but again, getting that information out to the whole public, it's important, because it's a big question. Um. There are additional points that aren't clear to me. Um, on pages nineteen and twenty of the executive summary, there's a category called federal special purpose. And I appreciate that there was some clarification during the presentation, but it could use more clarity, in my opinion. Revenues began pre-pandemic in the twenty eighteen, nineteen year and have gone up significantly since the pandemic. But it looks like expenditures in the same category didn't start until the twenty twenty, twenty-one year, so it would. Be nice to have clarity on what was the revenue from and for in twenty eighteen, nineteen and twenty nineteen, twenty, where was that spent? And then um that revenue looks to be just decreasing this upcoming year. But the expenditures in that category are increasing, so what is it being spent on now? Why are the expenditures six million more than the revenue, how might this impact future budget years with or without the levy passing? Um, on page twenty-one, what exactly is the community coalition money and where does that come from, what is it spent on? Um, the E L L money that comes from the state, if I'm not mistaken, um, I understand, I believe legally that it's limited on where it can be allocated. It shows about a ninety-four um thousand dollar net gain there. So where else is the district permitted to spend that money and what does the extra get applied to? Similar question for the learning assistance line item, comes from the state and there's almost a sixty-seven thousand dollar net gain. Are those funds limited on where they can be allocated and where does the net amount go? Um, I could ask these questions in an email and I do know Brenda would get back to me. And I appreciate that so much, but I feel as many of these questions as possible need to be answered in public settings over and over again. Because most people aren't going to reach out to Brenda, most people aren't going to take the time to seek out those answers, but the votes they cast. Will be based on what information is easily available and how it's presented and where. I am grateful for the district seemingly seeking out more public input throughout these processes, I hope to see you all expand on that. The thought exchange surveys coupled with the Budget Advisory Committee in the spring gave the district a chance to hear from the community. Through those processes, seeking input on desired budget reductions, this district heard something loud and clear. The community wants to see reduction start at the top. This wasn't a theme coming from one place, it came from the community surveys, it was also indicated in a room full of. Districts, district staff and stakeholders. This budget cuts about half the levy money, or seventy-eight percent of what would have otherwise been the overall budget. But the district office departments see a three percent cut, so again, I ask that this board and district budget. For a seven percent reduction to district office departments and then return things like the professional development that would otherwise be lost next year. Otherwise, please explain to the public why that is not happening. And then lastly, for now, how much of this information is available in Spanish? Thank you all.
Are there any other comments? Time, and are there any other comments? Okay, I will adjourn the public review and hearing of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget hearing now, thank you, Brenda. Okay, moving on to agenda item four point zero one, audience slash public comments. Do we have any online, any other ones? Okay. Okay, moving on to agenda item five points or just five business, so. First one up is five point zero one, consideration of the capital facilities plan two thousand twenty-two. We have Victor, presenters are Victor Scarpelli and Denise Stifarm. I can just, you want me to just intro? We can do the intro, the presenters will be providing an overview of the capital facility plan process utilized by Snohomish County and the city of Monroe. As required by law, the district CFP must be updated every two years in order to substantiate the need for future facility expansion. Due to actual and or anticipated student enrollment growth.
There we go. So I'll start while Victor is getting the PowerPoint presentation up and running, so I'm Denise Stifarm with Pacifica Law Group. And I have worked with the district for quite a while, number of years, um, on the update to the capital facilities plan, it's a process that. It's a process that your district does every two years, um, and it is part of a larger process. Designed by Snohomish County for purposes of incorporating your capital facilities plan as part of their comprehensive plan. And also for you to request if eligible school impact fees. So we'll do a, an overview of what is in the plan this year, um, including the process of how we got, how we got here. But just to generally start out, the capital facilities plan. Is a planning document that most people think about in terms of supporting school impact fees. But it also has dictates by the Growth Management Act that requires certain components. That really reflect what is in your current school district in terms of inventory of capital facilities. For schools and then also non-educational facilities. Think we're catching up. There we go. So the document, of course, is one of uh, several planning documents that you have. And they all are intended to complement one another, but the important thing to remember about the capital facilities plan. Is that it is really a point in time reference. So, for example, Victor and I started back in February of this year, putting together this plan. The demographer who did the enrollment projection started around the same time. And that is intentional because the process itself is quite lengthy and we'll talk about that a little bit longer. But it also reflects that you do this planning, but you do it regularly. You update it going forward. Every two years is the standard, but if things were to change dramatically, we can do what's called an out-of-cycle amendment. To make sure that your actual district circumstances reflect your planning. But the point in time is really an important reference because you're looking at a picture which really is around March of the year. That then carries forward through the entire process. And so what we'll do when we go through is just talk about different elements of this plan. But I did want to mention that, I did want to mention that this plan is in tandem with your other planning documents. And it's something that is intended to be relooked at and updated regularly. So um, talking about the process, I touched on this. We started back in February of this year. This is an established process. It is set up primarily by Snohomish County. Just because they are dealing with all of the school districts within the county who are updating capital facilities plans. So they have a school technical review committee um, run internally by county staff. That sets up a process. We have two drafts that go through that committee. We get comments back. The county provides certain information. They provide their growth projection information, which is included in the capital facilities plan. They also provide certain of the elements included in the school impact fee formula. Um, and so that is really the kickoff is getting that draft ready for them. So that occurred throughout the spring. The district also uh, provided an environmental review before your action on the plan, which is required as a non-project action. So there was a public notice and public comment period for that purpose. Um, of course, you're reviewing this tonight in a public meeting. And once you take action, then it will be sent forward to both the county and the city of Monroe. And they will, through their own legislative processes, review the plan and decide on their own. Do they want to adopt it by reference as a part of their capital facilities element of their comprehensive plan? And do they want to adopt your recommended school impact fees? And that last point is important just because you as a school district do not have independent authority to collect school impact fees. You rely on your local jurisdictions for that purpose. And we'll, we'll talk a bit more about school impact fees as we go, go forward. Um, but here really is the breakdown of what is required to be in a capital facilities plan. Um, and, and this is really just, like I said, an inventory of what is in your district today. And when we look at schools and we look at school capacity, we look at your locally adopted service standards. So that, so the state doesn't dictate how you provide education. In general, they do, of course, but how you, what you have in, going on in your classrooms in terms of your particularized program. That is up to you to define by your local standards. We use those to assess how much capacity do you have in each of your buildings? So for regular student instruction, what do your buildings look like? We identify that, we identify all of your facilities, um, both your instructional and non-instructional, all of your property. So it really catalogs what is going on in your district. And then the important pieces um, that go forward from there are looking at over the six-year planning period. So looking forward six years, based upon what you have today and based upon projected enrollment. What will you need to address a seat for a new student coming into the district from growth? Um, and whether you'll need that. Some districts have a situation where they have enough capacity today. Based upon enrollment, they're not going to need more, so they're not requesting a fee. Those districts like yours who are showing, yes, we are going to be projecting some growth. We are showing that we need some additional seats for that growth. They then have the school impact fee calculation included in their formula. Um, and that is based upon a component of the financing plan that's also a required element of the capital facilities plan. So those are the big, big picture five elements that are in here. What, what all that boils down to, there's a lot in the document, but I wanted to just pull for purposes of your presentation. Kind of the key elements of what we looked at and how we got to the point of uh, planning forward for the six years. And thinking about school impact fees. And um, I really appreciate that Director Whitfield asked the question about enrollment projections and the difference between what the demographer projects. And what Brenda has in her budget. And it's a very key question. Um, because as Brenda noted, she uses a straight cohort analysis. So she's assuming. This is oversimplifying it, but just a flat line of everything rolling forward today over the next, what she has as four years. Um, not thinking about any fluctuations that may occur up or down, but, but just rolling that forward. And being conservative because it is a budget document. The demographer looks at both the cohort. But then he um, and it's Dr. Kendrick who's been doing this work for many school districts throughout the state. He then adds on to that some of the circumstances that will, in his professional opinion, affect growth going forward. So he looks at birth rates to try to project out what is kindergarten going to look like going forward. He then pulls data from your jurisdictions to see what is in the development pipeline currently. And what also do those jurisdictions expect maybe there as we get out further into that planning period? And he makes some assumptions based upon recent history of how many students will be reflected from that development. He also, um, because it has been one of those um, truly anomalous times. Makes some assumptions about what the return of enrollment post-pandemic will look like. So he is using data based upon what he's seeing around the state to think about what things could like going. Could look like going forward. And so those are the key differences and that's why you're going to see some different numbers between what's in your budget and what's in your capital facilities document. It also is one of those reasons why we watch it closely. We want to update things if it's, you know, we, we know we're going to be updating in two years. But we also want to watch it closely, particularly now in this time to see. Are his assumptions really tracking with what happens, say, in a year? And if it doesn't track, we have the opportunity to update at that time. But based upon those assumptions today, um, and what we know from your recent history is we know that district enrollment for a number of years. Really was on a steady incline and that peaked in about twenty sixteen. And then started to plateau and drop through the twenty nineteen school year. There were some variations through grade levels, but that was a general K-12 picture. Um, of course, like all school districts, you saw the impacts of the pandemic on your enrollment. So what the demographers work showed us this for the purposes of this update is that there is an expected. Four point seven percent increase between what we saw in twenty twenty-one. And what he projects we will see in the twenty-seven twenty-eight school year. The increase is um, entirely at the K-five grade level. The high school and the middle school enrollments are expected to decline slightly. Um, we also know based upon information from Snohomish County and their, what they um. Have adopted through the Office of Financial Management as their growth projections, that they're actually projecting about twice that amount. So the district's demographer is more conservative than what Snohomish County expects your district to see over the next six years. And we, we have looked at that. Every year we update the capital facilities plan and in my experience. Those numbers always do look higher and the district's own demographers' information tends to be more accurate. And that's one of the reasons, in addition to all of his very focused study. That we rely on the demographer projections versus the county OFM numbers. But we do look at both. We compare them and the county wants us to, so that's an important piece. So all of that informs us that for purposes of the next six-year planning period, you are projected to have growth. At the K-five level. And what we also know is that based upon recent projects and you know, you've just uh. Completed that twenty fifteen bond cycle, which included capacity adds at all three grade levels. You're now turning a corner in very early stages in terms of thinking about what does the next bond potentially look like? What do we think we might need? And so what we've done for purposes of this capital facilities plan is basically carry forward what you all looked at in twenty twenty. And that um, did include adding elementary school capacity. So turning to the next slide. This is just kind of boiling down that need right there. So you see that there is a small delta. Um, just a little bit over five hundred students projected to increase at the K-five level. Again, by the twenty-seven twenty-eight school year, using the demographers' projections. And then we compare that to your existing permanent capacity. So what is in your brick and mortar school buildings? And we see that you are in fact showing a need for new elementary school capacity. So based upon that, you've established the um, the first two prongs, which I'll talk about a little bit more for purposes of eligibility. And then the third prong is, well, what is your plan for addressing that? Now, again, um, you see here that there is the anticipation of an addition and modernization at Salem Woods and Frank Wagner. These are carrying forward what was in the twenty twenty plan. It is early thoughts in terms of what you might do. But the key here is that you are thinking generally about adding elementary capacity because that is where your need is. And so we use that added elementary for purposes of calculating school impact fees going forward. And assuming these are the projects and that they don't change in terms of what was envisioned previously. That would add uh, a hundred and seventy-six seats and it would address that gap in need from the new growth. So this slide, it just summarizes what I walked through in terms of those three prongs of eligibility for impact fees. You're showing growth over the six-year period. Here it's just at the K-five level, but that's okay. You just need to show it at one grade level. You're showing a need for new capacity at that grade level where growth is projected. And you're showing that you're thinking and planning for some construction of additional capacity to address that growth need. Um, and so you're hitting all three of those prongs with, which gives the basis for impact fee eligibility. These are, before I get into the specifics of what your fee is, just very briefly. Just kind of touching on the legal framework for school impact fees. Importantly. Impact fees are only charged to new residential development, meaning that is where an impact to your school facilities comes from. They have to be expended, spent within ten years of collection. So Brenda has talked about that pool of funds within the impact fee account that she has. That is watched regularly to see where those funds are at in terms of timing and age. And then those fees need to be spent on projects identified within your adopted capital facilities plan. Which is another reason why the update is important. You want to stay current um, with, in terms of your adopted plan. So that you have that flexibility with spending your fees. Um, they do need to be spent on capacity projects related to growth. And that's why we do that whole analysis of projected enrollment versus existing capacity. And then importantly, they cannot be spent to address existing deficiencies in your system. So if you weren't showing growth, but you had some fees still um, in your account. You would have to hold those uh, for purposes of the growth-related project versus say, just a straight modernization project. And then the last piece that's very important is the impact fee cannot be the sole source of funding capacity improvements. There needs to be some other source of funds and that typically comes in the form of a bond or a capital levy. It also comes in the form of state dollars that you may receive from the School Construction Assistance Program. So um, some key factors for your impact fees that are included in the capital facilities plan. Again, they are based upon estimated construction costs for new elementary capacity. Um, which will be updated with each update of this capital facilities plan, both in terms of specific projects and cost escalation going forward. But for purposes of now, we're again rolling forward that twenty twenty planning. Um, but some, some, i- it wasn't a straight line across same fee that you saw in twenty twenty. And there are two primary reasons for this. When we update the capital facilities plan, we also update what's called the student generation rate. This is done by an outside consultant. They take actual building permits that were issued within the previous five-year period. They match it with student addresses and they tell us, on average, here are how many students generated from new construction within the district. What we found in the single-family fee, um, single-family student generation rate. Is that it would, there was a slight drop from what we saw in twenty twenty, not a huge one, but enough to make a difference. So that affected the calculated fee by decreasing it. The other factor playing into that single-family fee was the tax credit portion of the formula. Because average assessed valuation has gone up, there's a larger tax credit, so that offsets the unfunded need. So that's why you'll see the difference between the twenty twenty single-family fee and the twenty twenty-two proposed single-family fee. Multi-family fee is a, is a larger drop and this one has a history to it. Your district for a number of years had significantly high, a significantly high number of students residing in multi-family units. Um, and this went on for, I would say, at least three capital facilities plans. And we really wanted to look at it because it was really an outlier from other districts. That was the case in twenty twenty and we had a very good data set to support that. In this most recent update, the consultant found that there were actually very few units. Uh, that were constructed within the previous five-year period. And of those units, there were very few students who were being, who were residing in those units. Um, a number of things could have gone, been going on. We all know that this has been a, a not um, normal period of any kind. And so the bottom line is that it did not provide us with a good data set to rely upon. And so the Snohomish County ordinance gives us an option when we don't have a reliable data set. And that is to use the county-wide average. So by using that average, we see that student generation rates at the multi-family level have dropped significantly. Um, so that is the main difference for what you will see in terms of the difference in the fee. And so based upon that, and this is a history going back to the last, to the current capital facilities plan and then the last two. That's why you see in particular that multi-family rate dropping so much. So that's the big picture overview. I know it's a lot of information. I'm happy to answer any questions. And Victor, I don't know if you want to add anything as well.
Uh, no, just uh, Denise did a great job and uh, as she spoke, this is a fluid plan. As we move forward and we need to make changes based on needs or population, that's that uh, advantage we have by doing it every two years. It helps us move forward because the anomaly that she spoke about was pretty unique to us as we looked at them. And then we always ask the question, why? And then again, it, I don't know if I want to say it re-came back a little bit, but then when you look at the fees, they took a drastic drop. And probably one other piece that's not in here, but I know questions have come up is, how else do we look at the facilities that we have and look at it? We've been doing some other studies of looking at our buildings themselves, looking at the HVAC systems, the building conditions, things like that. looking at the HVAC systems, the building conditions, things like that. Those are taken into consideration, but not for the purpose of the capitals facilities plan at this point. That would be something that would drive future bonds, levies, things like that that come up, but those are community-based, based on, uh, putting together huge community, huge committees and helping formulate our plans to help give the board their needs and information they would need to make decisions as we move forward.
Victor. So I read the report and it looked like an expansion for, uh, Frank Wagner and Chain Lake. So it'd be a, a major addition to the, to the space. Uh, I was also looking at a, a middle school and a high school projected sometime in the future. When does the board, it seems like the board would have to look quite a few years in the future and project the length of time for construction and the costs and the permitting. How do you, do we look at that in another session? I know that you're presenting information that takes it all into account. But it's a little overwhelming thinking about, well, we better start building buildings right now. Well, we got three years left, you know, then we're going to have this population. And it also affects the number of students per classroom. And how would you address that?
I think to start and Denise, you can chime in, but we look at right now is the growth that we're going to be experiencing for the next six years is in the elementaries, K through five. Uh, but I don't see a lot in the middle schools and high schools. We do have one school that's at capacity in those terms, but can be rearranged. You know how we do it, where we put our children, like we've moved some classrooms from Frank Wagner to Frylands, for instance. We can use the capacity we have. Um, there are things called boundaries. Things up at Salem Woods, we have portables there now that we aren't going to be using in the fall that could be repurposed to back to what they were intended to use with your classrooms. So there's a lot of discussion that could come up as, as these things come in our future. Or, um, I call them these times where we don't know what's going to happen. Are the kids going to come back? Are, you know, the families moving? The multi-family unit was kind of something that sparked me because I don't have that deep history of the Monroe area. But then looking at that, that's a drastic change. But it did write us, I guess that's the correct, correct word. It brought us into what the average school district was because we were the anomaly for a while.
Yeah. And, and I'll just add, we, we purposely built into the finance plan, the potential of adding portables, um, not the ideal, but as an interim capacity solution. It is often, as you know, what districts need to do. And we wanted to make sure it was in the finance plan. So at a minimum, while you're thinking ahead to future planning, impact fee revenue could be spent on those portable facilities as needed.
I look, uh, back to demographics. I'd look at the population growth in, uh, Snohomish County, which is at 27, almost four, 14%. And I look at traffic mitigation. To give you some perspective, my father, when he grew up, Highway two was gravel. And when I was growing up in high school, there was just one stoplight on Highway two. And now from my office in Safeway, it takes almost 10 minutes to get over here to the school. It was 20 till and I was thinking, man, am I going to make it on time? So it's just the growth and population for our region. Highway two is not getting any bigger from, uh, Monroe all the way through. I think it's past Gold Bar or startup. So I just look at, look at the growth and the growth means families and the families that move in, you know, they might have old kids, young kids, might be having babies. So I guess what I'm just saying is just the overall growth for the area that isn't unknown. And then being able to project that, that we have some land set aside for future schools, which is good. But it just seemed kind of daunting projecting what we might need. And then, you know, when we're gonna, maybe the board here, or some of you will be out there with your golden shovels, starting the project sometime in the future. So more of a comment than any type of question.
I do want to kind of piggyback because Chuck hit on something I did have a question about. So with our previous presentation, here we are discussing our finances and where we are with our levy process. Looking at, and you mentioned that the, the capital finance plan cannot come only from the dollars that are generated by the new growth, but it also has to come from other areas. And so if this does look at us needing to pass another bond, when we're already struggling to pass a levy that's not even a new levy, it's just a maintaining levy at less than what the previous one was. How are we able to be proactive? What does that look like in the timeline of us saying, okay, in by 20, the 27, 28 school year, we're going to have 190 some students, 180 some students that we don't have seats for. So we need, let's just say for the lack, lack of argument, portables to be able to do that across our five elementary schools. How are we, how, what does the timeline look like then saying at that point in time, if we're projected to have this, let's baby step it backward. What does that look like for our district to be able to be proactive so that we are able to, uh, meet the needs of those students at that time when it comes? What, what kind of a timeline?
Well, I guess I could start. Um, I would hope that, uh, once we get through November, we start to build trust in our communities and, uh, the great places that Monroe has put together for their children. And, um, if we do continue to grow, I think within the next year or two, we can start those conversations of where do you want to see your children? Where do you want to put the schools of the future? Uh, how do we educate children as you know, Brenda spoke in her budget thing too is, you know, the way we're using technology today may not be the same in January and February if we don't pass that levy. As you guys know, I wear that hat also as part one of our departments. So all these combined help, you know, produce the children of tomorrow. So I'm just, I have to have hope that, you know, within the next year or two, we start these conversations and build the trust in the community and bring those into those committee meetings that we're talking about. Do we build on the property that we've been able to keep and sustain for now? Or do we add, as Denise said, portables, which isn't an ideal, house for our children, so to speak. But at the same time, if that's what it takes and that's what our community tells us, those are where you make your decisions to move forward and say, yeah, we do need to use the three portables that are at Salem Woods, plus we need to add two more. If that's the case, or Chain Lake, or wherever the need is at the time. We do know Frank Wagner is very tight on space, but again, we wait for the, our guess is saying it is. And we see what walks in the door on September 6th. So there's a lot of conversations. We need to have and engage the community in those conversations.
What does it look like for our timeline then? That we, if we were to need to pass a bond to make up the difference of the finances that we wouldn't be able to collect since we can't use all of those funds collected for, or, or only cannot use those funds, only, only those funds in order to pay for that, to make up the difference if we had to pass a bond to be able to come up with the rest of that, those types of funds, whether it's a new building, whether it's portables. Would this be a conversation we need to have in the beginning of area, at the beginning of the 23, 23 school year or the 24 school year so that we're able to, to meet the needs of the students and not, not be backpedaling, trying to catch up. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me. I would think definitely in 2023, we need to have some of those conversations, working with finance and knowing where our mitigation fees are, what our balance and what we even need to supplement that in order to make those things happen. Cause it may just be renovating some of the buildings that we have that are on our, you know, somewhere in our district and be able to shift some of our population, but.
Yeah, I, I think also another piece is what you're starting tonight is you, your, your action on the capital facilities plan. This really, so many people think of this document as just supporting impact fees, but it really is intended to tell your district's story and what, what is, uh, anticipated to occur going forward with the caveat that you need to watch it. And you need to update it regularly. And I think particularly given where you are at, um, generally, in thinking about future planning, but also just coming out of the pandemic. I think what Victor and I should be tasked with over the next year and even really kind of thinking it more front-loaded is really watching to see what is going on with your enrollment? What is going on with development? How soon are those, uh, students coming into the district? And, and keeping you updated for, for that purpose. Even if we come to you and suggest, you know, you're not supposed to update, you're not required to update this until 2024, but we think enough has changed where a 2023 update makes sense so that your community is able to track this effectively.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick things. Um, and I think in line with, with what my fellow directors are talking about, this, this sort of concise, um, concrete information leads to a whole bunch of other conversations, right? And so, um, I have two things, one that I immediately start thinking about, and Victor, you brought it up is, is boundaries. So especially as we are talking about community feelings, trust. Every time that I have brought up boundaries in this district, it's like, oh no, shh, don't, don't talk about that. That's, that's scary for a community. Um, and so I guess I'm, I'm interested to, to learn more about and to continue talking about it. It seems like something that, that we need to talk about. Even if it is a five-year plan or a seven-year plan. And so maybe this document is our way of starting into that conversation. The other thing in looking at the report that sort of stood out to me is that we have some buildings designated as they can be expanded and some that they cannot. And there were sort of reasons given in there. So my first question on that piece is who makes that determination? Does it ever change within the specific building or site? And then for buildings that cannot have determined to not be able to be expanded, how do we continue to meet the needs of those students in those buildings? And, and you may have touched on it, but I just want to make sure that, um, that we talk about it. So for example, you can imagine I come from, from Malp, my kids are at Malp. That is one of the schools that is listed as not being able to be expanded. It's also a building that doesn't have air conditioning. That, you know, where there are some needs, where there's a difference when you walk through the doors of Malp versus say Salem Woods. And so how do the needs of students in those facilities also still get prioritized?
Well, probably to start, um, every building has its own unique characteristics and features. And a lot of it has to do probably with the property, uh, depending on, uh, a Malp we'll use as an example. And, uh, I know enough about it to know that, uh, probably if we were going to expand something at Malp, we would have to go up versus out because of the area and the impact to the environment. So that would be a plan that if a conversation were to come up in a committee, that let's say we needed space at Malp. If that truly came up, then that would be a modernization project that may come up versus adding, you know, multiple portables to Malp. Again, I, not having all the information of all the different schools, but a, an example would be of Park Place Middle School needed to expand. We already know we can't put any more portables on that property. We don't have the space and we're already at two stories there. So we would have to look at, as Chuck referred to, his other properties nearby, maybe to build a middle school if those were to come up. We, according to our projections, we're not seeing that in the middle schools and high schools for the next six years. But at the same time, it's something to think about. If our kindergarteners should go way up in the next seven years, you're looking at 10 years to 12 years down the road. So to answer, we'd have to look at every site. And that was one of the things I spoke about. We do have another, uh, group working on looking at each of our buildings that we currently have to find out, you know, how are they working, especially in the area of HVAC? Cause during the pandemic, we boosted everything to well, some well over a hundred percent. How long are those buildings, those units going to last? You know, so we've taken, we're taking all that into consideration. We're also looking at our water systems in each of our buildings because that's some of the new laws that are coming up. That's going to really impact us as a district too. Do we need to change out some of our water system? There's a lot of variables, um, that'll come into play with that.
Yeah. And the other thing that, and, and I do think it's probably something that should be, it should be and is on the list to look at regularly in terms of the specific facilities and the study and survey document that is done regularly does do a good job of that. But one impact that, um, really is to be considered is land use regulations. And whether or not the jurisdiction, whether it's the county or the city, will allow additional development on a site with, with the Malp site. Um, I just looked at the table to see what the note was there and there's a septic limitation. And so, you know, potentially there is a new technology in the future that would allow for additional capacity there. Or a connection to sewer. Um, so it's something to consider going forward, but land use regulations do play into a lot in terms of how a site is built out and whether additional capacity can be added.
Any more questions? Okay. And I just have a couple of notes. Let me see. Um, thank you for your snapshot of information. I, I wanted to add that this is such an incredible opportunity to also start diving into, I know I've said it over and over again, but strategic plan or just a plan. I think the last time that, uh, we looked at one was seven or eight years ago, I think. And I don't, I've never seen it. So rumor on the streets is it's about seven or eight years old. And, uh, it's exciting because I think it also allows us an opportunity to bring in our community and engage in those conversations. And, um, just continue to help clarify a lot of this information and what that means to the Monroe commitment. So again, just a lot of opportunities to continue to, to work with the people in the community who want to see our students succeed. And thank you so much. Oh, and is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School, School District Board of Directors approve the 2022 capital facilities plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Board of Director, Board of Directors of the Monroe School District approved the 2022 Capital Facilities Plan Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Thank you so much, Denise. Thank you so much, Vic. Okay. Moving on to agenda item 5.02, is there a motion?
I move that Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the acting superintendent employment agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the acting superintendent employment agreement discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item 5.03, consideration of MHS Drama Club waiver. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the MHS Drama Club waiver.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the MHS Drama Club waiver discussion.
Yeah, I would like to ask a question about this. I was looking at the, the waiver because 5.04 has the exact same waiver for our policy of 4260P, which is actually the procedure part of it. And I was looking at it with the citing the need for, uh, the waiver being for cultural reasons. I'm not objecting necessarily to their waiver. I'm just wondering if this begins to open the door that every activity that we have, everybody wants a waiver and it peak, we create a precedent and I'm, I'm concerned about that. And if that's the case, do we need to look at adjusting how our procedure process looks at? I just, again, I'm not objecting to the, to the issue. I actually agree with it. I just, I, I want to have a discussion with my fellow board directors about what this looks like because I don't want every single activity to say, we provide a cultural experience to our district and therefore we'd like to have a waiver. And it just, it actually creates more of a, a problem than it does a solution for those types of things. So I'd like to hear from the rest of you, what you think about that.
I think that we should look at, uh, the policies. And now that we have some breathing room, we could look at, uh, several policies. Um, I have several in mind that we could just have a discussion that we could just go through some board policy. So at some point in the future, we should maybe have a group of them that we have up for discussion. So I'm in favor of that.
I'd be in favor of discussion as well. Um and I also, it was something I thought about asking during during the budget conversation, but I'm curious if the building plans, as the students are putting together their budgets, if they're accounting for waivers or not, and if that's somewhere where there can be more um collaboration between what the board, how the board is able to support um students.
Yeah, I'm pulling up the policy.
If you want, I I it's at the bottom of the policy or the procedure part because it's the four six four two sixty P. It has yeah, the waiver, it's it's paragraph H waiver discount fees, so there should be no waiver or discount or facility use fees unless the group or entity can prove and provide sufficient documentation of reciprocity that directly benefits the school district or students of the district. Documentation shall be provided in written form and shall include such backup information as super the superintendent designate deemed necessary to substantiate the claim of reciprocity or student benefits. And the and the part that they're citing in there is the second part where it says student benefit shall mean an activity or commodity that is provided to school district students or facilities in which a monetary value can be readily established. Example, tickets to a cultural event, tutoring or homework support, educational materials, books or magazine subscriptions or other items that provide an educational, cultural or general welfare welfare benefit. And I'm wondering if, again, it's not an issue with the request here, it's an issue with do we need to look at how we revise this? Because I'm worried that we create a gigantic hole and we have two groups citing the exact same procedure with the exact same waiver. Is this the beginning of something that's saying, do we have too wide of a swath here? I think it's important that we do that for the things that provide a benefit. But are we just saying anything and everything can be a benefit? And now this actually creates a problem in our district rather than um an exception to things that are that are truly beneficial.
I feel like it's also an opportunity, though, to look at our facility fees. I know that we've had those discussions before uh because I think if this is, if these are programs that are being put on by our students and our community and they're asking for custodial fees to be waived, and I know that you and I had a conversation about custodial fees and how those are applied, but the how they are also inconsistent with what we are seeing in our policies. I think it's an opportunity to also have that conversation. So I I wonder if that is a bigger piece to this puzzle as well.
So maybe with our interim superintendent, in the fall, we can probably put this on an agenda item for a workshop and a conversation for us to look at a few of these things to to maybe clean it up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? Okay.
I kind of, well, I just kind of be curious about how much that is. Fifty dollars, five hundred or five thousand, just a curiosity. I'm in favor.
Yeah, I think there's a big difference. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Hey, agenda item five point zero four, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District District Board of Directors approve the MHS Athletic Department waiver to cover custodial fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, the Monroe School District Board of Directors approved the MHS Athletic Department waiver to cover custodial fees. Discussing discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item six, superintendent consent agenda. And agenda item six point zero five, approval of the superintendent consent agenda, is there a motion?
That the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated August eighth, twenty twenty two.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated August eighth, two thousand twenty two. Discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item seven point zero eight, approval of the board consent agenda, is there a motion?
I move the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated August eighth, twenty twenty two.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated August eighth, two thousand twenty two. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item eight, oath of office for interim superintendent. The oath of office will be administered to Dr. Marcy Larson, and we're actually going to have Carl Brunner.
Absolutely, this is, this is a very exciting time for me, for the board and for Dr. Larson. And having said that, Dr. Larson, would you please join me at the podium? Thank you. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Marcy Larson, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Marcy Larson, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Washington.
And will faithfully perform the duties of Superintendent Secretary of Monroe School District number one zero three.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of Superintendent slash Secretary of Monroe School District number one zero three.
In the County of Snohomish, State of Washington, according to the best of my ability.
In the County of Snohomish, State of Washington, according to the best of my ability.
I would like to be on behalf of the board the first one to congratulate you and um you know, Dr. Larson and I have known each other for a number of years. And I think you really have um as your interim superintendent for the next school year. And um she, as you well know, but I'll repeat it for not only for you, but for the public as well, uh ran a district about three times this size for uh almost seventeen years. And that is a tremendous accomplishment. And that does not come without uh significant skills uh as well as some battle scars uh and calluses that she earned along the way. So, Marcy, thank you so much for your commitment to the Monroe School District, its students and community, and I just wish you all the best.
I I want to thank you for inviting me to join your team. I'm very excited. I honestly, as I've mentioned to you about four weeks ago, this was, you know, just not in my mind at all that I would be going back to work and and doing another superintendency, but I I've totally turned that corner and I'm all in, I will work very hard for you, I promise. And I'm so impressed with the folks that I've already met in the district. So I'm excited to be here, thank you.
And with, I'm I'm sorry, with the board's permission, I'd like to make some brief parting comments. Okay, well, I I want to start by saying that I really appreciate the opportunity that the board has given me to spend this brief period of time um getting to know your school district and uh the folks who work at the district office and in your schools on behalf of your students. It really has been a great opportunity for me and um I have enjoyed it greatly. And you know, it it's no, it it's no surprise or secret, maybe a better word, that public education um in this day and age is a very difficult endeavor. Uh districts large and districts small uh experience more challenges by the day. And part of those challenges have to do with the political climate, both local and national. Part of them have to do with school funding. Part of them have to do with the needs of students and part of them have to do with uh the needs of staff. The needs of facilities also is Victor, yep, he's still here. You know, I I worked for many years with Denise Stifarm on issues around the capital facilities planning process. And it is to get to a point in answer to many of your questions to where you've identified what you know is likely to happen as far as the condition of older school facilities and the number of students that you can realistically uh predict will be knocking on your door. Between that time when you've identified that information and the time when, as Chuck said, you're able to take a gold spray painted shovel and break ground on new projects. For me, it was fourteen years. And it is just a tremendously challenging um endeavor. And it takes a lot of community involvement. It takes hours and days and years of planning. And it takes um it it takes oftentimes not only two, but three and even four election attempts. And yet, when you get there, it's worth every bit of the time and effort that you've spent. So again, that is just part of the the landscape of public education uh now. What I can tell you is something that you already know better than I do, which is that Monroe School District has its challenges. And you, as a board, have experienced uh those challenges and you may continue uh to experience uh additional challenges as you work your way towards stabilizing community attitudes towards the district. The other thing that I've been able to experience over the past two and almost a half weeks, as it's just crazy to think about how short a period of time it's been and yet how if you know what to look for, uh you really are able to pick up many things very quickly. And one of the things that I've picked up is that you have some folks with tremendous experience and skill sets. And uh many of them are represented by folks at the reserved back table. And these folks are just very committed to Mount, uh Mount Vernon, I said it. I'm trying, it's that M that that uh messes me up every time. But committed to Monroe Schools and the community and uh its students. And a number of them are here without a whole lot of experience in this community. And yet, it doesn't take long to fall in love with the district that you're working for and the students who you're representing. So uh I just wish you and them and the community and your students all the best in the coming years. It's 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 a challenge and yet you're not alone. Everyone is facing similar challenges. So again, thank you very much. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to ramble a little bit. Uh and I just, again, thank you and wish you the very best as I do, Dr. Larson.
How'd you know, how'd you know, right? Yeah. Well, Dr. Brunner, I can't believe it's only been two and a half weeks. And and what you have helped our board and our district and our executive staff be able to do with your experience coming. Thank you so much. As a young board, we absolutely appreciate you and uh and what you've done for our community to come down and to to help us even in between the school year. Even though we're in, you know, we haven't started our our next school year yet. This is a huge deal for our students and helps us get on a good track to to move forward. And so I just want you to know that I really, I really genuinely appreciate all of the work that you've done to help us. And even just getting to to know you a little better and the and the courageous conversations training last week was absolutely fabulous and I and just to hear your heart, I so appreciate all of your work. Thank you so much.
It's been a tremendous pleasure, you're welcome. Again, one last comment I would make. Marcy, this will be short. And and I've said this in districts I've been in before. When when you're in conflict and you're in crisis, the thing that, and I've been there, the thing that I think it's tremendously important to remember and to focus on is kids don't care. Kids could care less whether or not parents are ticked off with the school board. The school board is ticked off with the district office or certain principals. And I'm not saying this because that's the case here, but oftentimes it is. Kids don't know anything about that, and if you tried to explain it to them, they would get bored in a heartbeat. And uh they they don't, they don't care about funding problems. They wouldn't understand it. Brenda is the only one who deeply understands it. But that they don't care about that, nor should they. What they care about and what they need is that everybody in this room who works for the Monroe School District shows up every single day of the school year with one focus in mind. And that is to give their best selves every day to them. And uh it it just, I never, I hope that I never lose sight of that. I have six grandchildren and uh I just hope. I have six grandchildren and I just hope every single day when they enter their schools in the Anacortes School District, that that's what they're met with. And the sad reality is oftentimes they are, sometimes they're not. And I think, you know, nobody's perfect. I'm at the top of the imperfect list. But it's incumbent on all of us just to try our absolute best to bring it a hundred and eighty days every school year. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You are just a quality human being, Dr. Brunner. I, I really appreciate you. And I cannot believe it's only been two and a half weeks. You're a hundred percent right. I, I just appreciate you from that first phone call and you being willing to take on this task and, and doing so much and, and making such an, such a huge impact in the time that you've been here and, and sharing some of that wisdom with us. And you said that beautifully. And I just thank you for continuing to have that perspective and for sharing that with us. Because I think sometimes for myself included, I, I, it's a good reminder as to why we do some of what we do. So thank you for reminding us of that. And thank you for coming on and doing this work with us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Dr. Marcy, are you ready for it? All right.
She is more than ready, I guarantee you.
Excited to have you here. But thank you so much. Thank you for stepping in, stepping up and answering the call. Okay, moving on to agenda item nine. Board reports, comments, and suggestions.
Okay, I'll go first on this one. So just a couple of things for the community to be aware of. Number one is each year the VFW sponsors an essay contest for elementary, middle, and high school levels, grades three through 12th. These, the essay entries are due October 31st by midnight to Snohomish County VFW posts. There are eight posts within Snohomish County. For more information, you can visit their website, www.vfwa.org, or reach out to your local VFW post. These essays come with cash awards and are given out at the post, district, state, and national levels. So something, yeah, something I will be encouraging my two students who are eligible to do this year. And the themes look really amazing. Another thing to take note of is the VFW, VFW is having a cemetery cleanup Saturday, September 17th at 9:00 a.m. My boys and I have gotten to take part in this and other events that they have done. And I always find it's just a great way to teach kids a little bit about history and how to honor those who have gone before us and who have given so much so that we can be here where we are today. So it's a little part of what we like to do and just honoring the veterans and our own family as well. The last thing that I have on my list here, we have something really big that's going to be happening at Sky River Park. The very first Sky Valley Mental Health Awareness Fair and Family Fun Day is going to be happening Sunday, September 18th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. One of my very good friends and fellow Sky Valley Moms, Heidi Dawson, is one of the co-organizers of this event. She dreamed up what this could look like. And I'm just going to read the statement that is on her Facebook event post about what to expect. Come enjoy a free family-centered event with vendors, food, raffle, and carnival games, while also being able to gain vital information on mental health awareness and service providers here in Snohomish County. This is a fully inclusive event. Everyone is welcome and expected, no matter your race, ethnicity, religious preference, neurodiversity, or sexual orientation. We all know how difficult the past few years have been, especially with the pandemic and all that has happened. And so having this family-friendly fair that is going to bring mental health awareness as well as many resources together at the fingertips of those within the community. It's so important and it just amazes me that someone can have an impact this big and create an event that will touch the lives of many. So I encourage you to go. I will be there. They are continuing to add more and more things all the time. I know that they are partnering with the Monroe School District in this capacity as well. So I encourage you to look it up online and attend if you can. Anyone else?
So just a couple of other things I wanted to just update the rest of our community. Cause I know all of the kindergarten parents are watching this meeting right now, or the incoming kindergarten parents. On a week from today. And thank you communications team for getting that on the website. It's on the website, the banner right on the front. August 15th to the 18th. Parents and guardians will need to drop off kids for the kinder jumpstart. So if you want kids available for that, that is also coming up. And then looking at, guys, it's around the corner. Do you believe it? It's the greatest day of the school year for, or the year for parents, the first day of school. Is September 7th. And except for the kindergartners and that is, yep, and Sky Valley. And so, and then that is September 12th. And so really excited to, to get started for this next school year. And I, guys, I just want to say, I feel like we've, we've, we're coming out of a fog. And I'm really hoping for, I'm, I'm excited for the school year that we have had a chance to kind of do a big reset. So I'm excited for our students. I'm excited for our staff. Dr. Brunner set us up really well with a lot of things. Dr. Larson, I'm really excited to work with you. So those are big dates coming up, you guys. Don't forget, because four of us are parents. Don't forget your kids on the first day of school.
VFW essays. It was almost fifty years ago. Participated and was asked to read something at the VFW. I tell you, perspective. Employment's on my mind. So during the last month, I have hired somebody at a high pay level and somebody at a lower pay level. And I wish I had Dan to help me out during my hiring process. My management team, me, myself, and I weren't doing so well. So I got my daughter involved and as a master in education. And she helped me through that. But there's, there's a lot of similarities, other than a lot of zeros for, for one category. I look for dependability, integrity, honesty. And from a school setting, the critical thinking that is developed by, by the school, by the classes. And that they can apply that, the skills that they learn to be able to come into a very strange business like licensing and to be able to perform during that time. So I'm glad that's over for both employment opportunities and candidates. The other thing I wanted to mention is the National Night Out Against Crime. I'm going to brag that our Rotary Club, specifically Sally Petty, has organized that for the last thirteen years. And it's a, a big event for the Rotary and it was so fun to see all the kids, the cheerleaders, the football team, and all the vendors. And it just shows the value of our community and just the love for just all the organizations that go into the Monroe community and to honor the first responders for the police or the fire department. And another plug for the Rotary, we were instrumental in getting the K-9 that we got to see a demonstration. The bad guy ran out and he got taken down. And then he got up and he tried to assault the police officer and he was taken down again. So Tango is a proud part of our community. And one of the officers that helped protect our community. Yes, Carl, I also ramble.
I'll just do a really quick one. I just want to say that I, I also feel like we're coming out of a fog. I, I feel like we've been on a really big journey since, since November and December of last year. And I'm so thankful for all the people within the district, folks who have come from outside of the district to help us through this process. And I, I'm just so amazed by the work that new folks are doing. Dan, you know, our, looking at our HR report, seeing teachers who are being hired and staff. It's, it's really exciting and I'm just excited for our kids to come back. Carl, I'm so sad to see you leave because it's been great to get to know you over the short period of time. And Marcy, Dr. Larson, I'm, I'm really excited to work with you going forward. And I also just want to think, I want to thank the, my fellow directors. And I want to let the community know, because I don't, you get to see a lot of what we do. But if you're not in this room and, and maybe not having the direct conversations. I think we're getting really good at having hard conversations with each other. I think we're getting really good at communicating and not necessarily agreeing, but understanding each other. And, and I appreciate that. So I just wanted to express that. And then I, I also would really like to thank President Bumpus because I feel like she's given a lot of leadership through all of this and has reached out for support and help in a way that is just open and honest. And, and it's, it's inspiring and I'm, and I'm thankful. So thank you for doing the work because I know it's a lot. That's it.
Thank you. That's really sweet, Sarah. Thank you. So I have, I think I've shared this before. So I have about, I think there's like twenty-six of us cousins who've gone through the Monroe School District and I was the first one. So I'm old, but whatever. But I was talking to recently one of my cousins who's a junior. And she really struggled, like she's pandemic really got her, like that was really, really tough for her. And she was struggling, like failing all these classes. And so I caught up with her over the weekend. I said, hey, how's school going? You know, how's your summer been? And she said, oh my gosh, I'm like almost all caught up. I connected with my teachers. I've had a lot, like she's telling me about all the support she's had through our, our teachers and our school. And then she said, and actually there, there was this really cool program. It's, um, do you know, it's like leaders? And I go, oh yeah, leaders and learning. It's one of our programs. Yeah, that's so good. She's like, yeah, I'm actually going to go there. It's really cool. Like they hand me my stuff and I'm able to do it. And you know, I have like people there and I thought that's so awesome. So she is back on track and the light in her, in, in her, in her eyes and just how excited she was about not just school and finishing that and having really great support, but also just about life again. And it was such a great reminder that I, I already know we have great people in our, in our school district. But it was someone who I personally know who's sharing a story. And I thought we, this is, this is what we do here. This is why all of the people show up and go through these hard things because we know that it's about people and human beings. And it goes so much beyond, you know, reading and writing and all of the impact that we have. So I just wanted to share that because there are a lot of people doing really great work. And it doesn't happen on a microphone or on the website. But I, I really appreciate the people that we have. I went to Pisano's today and ran into like eight teachers. I was like, hey. And I thought that was so neat because they are just getting exciting and ramping up to tackle all the things this fall. And it's like, this just doesn't happen without these amazing people who we have as part of our district. So I just want to shout out all of our, our teachers, our building leaders, our district office, all of our staff for remaining committed and, and doing the work and, and like resting, I hope, this summer as well. And hope that we come back just fully like recommitted, I think. And excited for Dr. Larson to be here. And Dr. Brunner, you're just really a cool, cool guy. And I just, I feel like we should just, we should give you an office here, you know? Just hang out, just hang out, Dr. Brunner. Don't leave us. Yeah, but I, I, I am also really excited and really hopeful and this is tough stuff. But I, I think that, I always believe that the people who are in the position they're in are meant to be here and meant, meant to do what they are doing. And so I am, I feel very blessed to be here and very honored to share this table with all of you. So thank you. And that's all I've got. It is eight twenty-six P.M. and tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you.